All right, we're gonna bring this to start. This is the public hearing for the Watson Woods subdivision in Parsonsfield, Maine. What we will be doing today is there will be a presentation by the developers or by Tom Greer. We will then open the floor up to public comments, concerns, and questions. Please, when you address, please address the board. When you do so, please state your name and residency of town, if you're Parsonsfield, Porter, or wherever. There's no voting, nothing like that today. This is still informational hearing, a public hearing to gather information for the final plan for the Watson Woods subdivision. So, Tom, would you like to start?
Sure. I'm going to use voice tonight, so if you can't see them, please come up front or take a look, that type of thing, just so you'll get a chance to see. As part of the submission, for the final submission, we've submitted a book back to the planning board. It has a fair number of items in it. The application is filled out. There is a section in here on how we've addressed each item that's required by the board. There is a drainage report in here. There is a high-intensity soils map. There is a wetlands report. There is a wildlife report. There are covenants for the deeds, that type of thing. There are MDOT driveway entrance permits for the project. So there's a fair number of items that are in here that have been submitted to the board. With me tonight is Mark Hampton. He has done all the soils work on it, and if you've got soils questions of Mark, you can answer them. And also with me is Jason Tone, who is with Jones Associates, who does wetlands mapping and wildlife studies. Jason is a wildlife biologist, and I'm going to let him do a little brief presentation on wildlife piece of it. I think that that is somewhat through the board, the ask board at preliminary, we submitted it as the final, so those two experts are here to answer any questions. What we're, the project itself is located on a piece of roughly 55 acres with Route 160 along one side of it and Hussey Road along the other, and the parcel has forested, which was harvested, I believe, 2015. That makes sense. The project itself consists of eight lots that are along Route 160. They're generally two acres, more than two acres. We're looking at eight lots and 19 and a half acres total, something like that. So they're relatively large lots. The ordinance requires them to be in a ratio of one to three or less and 200 foot square on them. That limits the size of them. If the ordinance was written as the standard shoreline zoning, which is one to five, these lots could actually be a little deeper, a little longer, a little bigger. But they're that size because that's what the ordinance requires them to be. We have gone along the road and combined driveways. So of the eight lots, there are four driveways that we utilize. One on the outside here has three lots that go to it, one in the middle, and there's two on this one and two on the last one. So we've minimized the number of driveway entrances where possible. The board at the site walk asked us to look at relocating the driveway for these three lots out onto Hussey Road, and we've provided them with a sketch. And based on the feedback, our final plan will probably reflect coming out onto Hussey Road with those three driveways, which would mean a driveway coming across those two to One of the graphics that the planning board asked for or required is steep slopes. What you see here are slopes steeper than 25%. What we're looking at is this front half here, and so there are little sections of the sites that are a little steep than 25%, but most of the steeper slopes are back on the parcel to be retained by the developer. This is a more current aerial photograph. It was taken after the site has been harvested for timber. If you look real closely, you see some of the hall roads that come through it. It gives you an idea that even though the site's been harvested, there's still a fair amount of trees on it, and in the last four years, if you keep looking on the site walk, you'll see that the intermediate growth is spurting up. I happen to like doing subdivisions where they've been harvested. The houses that get built, there is better buffer between them versus having just the bare stems of an overgrown forest. So I think that provides more buffer between them, and actually will provide better stormwater control because you do have more growth underneath it. And again, this is the aerial photograph that shows it. Part of the planning board, if you go along the front, we've provided a landscape plan that fills in some pieces of the buffer that those were done by Anthony Mensch, the landscape architect. And we looked at some of those areas when we did the site walk. There are small shrubs, the trees that are coming back up in that area, but we felt we could fill in some of those just to make it a little thicker in the buffer along Route 160 and going through those. This is the drawing that shows the lot split here. In red, we show them the two lots that would come out onto Hussey Road along with this third one. This is a little bit easier to see than the last drawing I had. If you come down the road roughly 300 feet or so, this is probably where the lot split line comes in that area. My understanding is the board is going to have that pair reviewed. We've marked the driveway location on the ground out there in blue, and we'll put together a revised plan that shows those two lots as they come back for the final signing of the mine works. Last item that Jason talked a little bit about is the wildlife study.
Sorry, before you begin, I don't know if you wanted to also mention the common space that's, because
Yes.
... if there's some people might not have attended other meetings.
Yeah.
Explain that.
Yeah, between the preliminary approval, had the preliminary approval, the planning board wanted to have common space included in the subdivision, and what we've added is roughly eight acres out here. The board asked for 10%, and we've given them closer to 15% of the whole parcel back in this area here. It does have some frontage on 160, and there's an access easement for all the lots to be able to get to it. Going through the town's comprehensive plan, this area wasn't designated for either any athletic fields or that type of thing, so we felt the open space left as a natural area was what was called for. And so that eight acres is now being set aside for that, and each homeowner will have a proportion of that.
Okay.
So my name is Jason Tone, Jones Associates in Auburn. I'm the wildlife biologist there. So inevitably, when you develop on raw land, you're gonna affect some wildlife, but it's through good planning that you can minimize these impacts. And from looking at the plan here, you can see on the bottom, the lots are pushed right against the road, and they leave 66% of the land alone and untouched. And because of this wildlife in the area, it still has the ability to, still maintains connectivity, and it minimizes fragmentation, so species are still able to roam around in that piece. And if they need more space, there's, the landscape as a whole is very large and they have the ability to cross into a new piece of property. So I think the plan has done a good job at minimizing fragmentation and keeping connectivity. Another thing I want to talk about, which is this map here, is significant wildlife habitat that's been previously mapped. And as you can see here, this is the parcel in the red, and this circle is a radius. That radius is 1.45 miles, which is just showing that there's no significant wildlife that is mapped by I F N W within 1.45 miles. So that's a, that's a large radius. So when I went on site, I just, I walked the parcel and I observed any unusual wildlife, or sometimes the mapping isn't perfect through I F N W, so it's good to get someone to look just to make sure that nothing is shown. And when I was walking around on there, I didn't see any significant wildlife habitat. What I primarily saw was deer, I saw whitetail deer and songbirds. That was mostly what I saw for wildlife. So yeah, in conclusion, I guess I would say that I think the development has done a good job at keep maintaining connectivity and reducing fragmentation. That's it.
I should ask you a question.
Sure.
I have your report in front of me, and I wanted to ask you, what would the impact of, on this development in terms of what you're assessing? If you 35 acre parcel that is now apparently not being developed for it to be planned?
Essentially, there wouldn't be any difference other than I did observe two vernal pools on site. So in the back lot, in the top of it, there were two vernal pools, and I wasn't looking at them for significance or anything. But those vernal pools, I did put a 250-foot buffer on just to make sure, because DEP requires a 250-foot offset. And so if you want to develop the top half of the parcel or the top whatever acres, you might run into some vernal pool issues, but again, they weren't checked for significance. But the development that is occurring here is well beyond the 250-foot setback that was required by DEP, so that won't have any effect on development. Yep?
There's a resource conservation area that abuts to the development. What impact might that have, and what is your belief with resource conservation area being so close? That's one question. The other question is, I hear no mention of great brook. Isn't that part of the wildlife picture?
What, a brook, you said?
Great brook.
Great brook in this parcel here?
Yeah, it's a buttset.
A buttset. So I didn't do the wetlands on site. That would be probably a question for Mark. I was just strictly doing the wildlife aspect of it. I did see the brook on site, but I was just gonna, my job was more non-wetlands stuff, so I knew Mark was coming to do the wetlands. So obviously that for him to speak about. And the resource, sort of resource protection land?
Yes, it's highly protected, and it abuts the property. What effect would that kind of development have on that resource protection land that abuts property?
Yeah, so I probably, I would have to see what's the size of that, how many acres that was. But overall, this piece of land here and the land surrounding it is like, it's quite vast, and there's a lot of connectivity, and in general, there's not a lot of development going on. So even with that resource protection being there, I still feel that wildlife has a ton of room to get around, and since no significant wildlife is being disturbed, wildlife has the opportunity to move and relocate if the development did impact some other species that were not significant.
I do want to point out that you did say that there isn't a lot of development going on in that area.
Yeah, like in comparison to like Portland or something like that. Is that everything?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I apologize for being late. My name's JP, the board chair. I've been chasing pigs around for the last half an hour, trying to cover this what? I was just playing catch-up. So were we doing questions from the board to the applicant or just in general questions?
It was just general questions for clarification for right now.
Okay, cool. I'll let you keep on with the name.
I think we've covered all of the aspects. We'd be happy to listen to comments and questions from the public and respond to them when we get them.
So I guess at this time, we're gonna open up questions and comments from the public. Yes, Jeff, do you want to please come up and say your name and residency, please, for the camera?
Hello, my name is Jeff Ragnow from Parsonsfield. I've been overseeing this project since day one, and I don't know how to start, but it started off as a rumor that there's gonna be a subdivision. And the town of Parsonsfield said, no, this don't, not gonna be a subdivision. Then one day, they came, the planning board says, I'm gonna put in 14 houses, we're gonna put in a subdivision. So I guess the rumor was true, that it was logged, and there was a cut permit for a subdivision filed in the town hall. But it was just a rumor, that there was a cut permit in the town hall for a subdivision. It wasn't a rumor. There was supposed to be a wildlife study done maybe before they cut the trees, not four years later. There's so much to say. It's crazy. It's absolutely crazy to come in and study something that was already cut. The damage has already been done. The wildlife study should have been done four years ago. When they were logged, they should have been stopped and said, hey, what are you doing? Says on the permit, you're cutting for a subdivision. The buffers are cut. Now, you know, buffers are back. After four years, it's just brushed really, but they, they cut it for the timber, and they should have gone in front of the planning board and said, this is what we want to do. You want to go in. And the planning board could have advised them, this is what you need to do. You know, you showed us your plan, you need to leave these buffers here, not cut everything down. Everything was cut down first, and it was right on the cut permit, cutting for a subdivision. Not cutting for timber harvest, cutting for a subdivision. I don't see the CO here. And, and, I probably have more to say, but, and the reason the driveways are changed is because they didn't have the site, site distance. It wasn't because of being nice. There's been a lot of lies, and I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, my name's Scott Croker. I got a two-pronged question. First of all, is Wadsworth building these houses, and what type of dwellings are they gonna be?
Would you like me to respond? My understanding is no, he's not going to build them, and if you buy the lot, you can build whatever house you would like to build as long as it meets the total.
And I guess my second question, is there any covenants on the properties and sales?
Anybody?
Covenants is.
There are covenants described in this plan here by the applicant, basically a homeowners' F O N association.
And what other covenants is?
What has it ever stopped moving there on to do it to me?
Basically, following the subdivision regulations, we have to create a homeowners' association. Normally, I wouldn't have done that for a small eight-lot subdivision, but because these rates require it, there will be a formal association. All the owners have to be members of that. The primary restriction is on the common open space, which Tom Greer pointed out, and the restrictions there are the common open space shall be restricted to passive recreational use by the owners of lots within Watson Woods. That's enforceable, so there's no, buildings can be erected or placed on, and it is for, you know, walking, hiking, cross-country skiing, or snowshoeing in the winter. And the homeowners' association has the ability to enforce that, should any homeowner violate that. There's no particular restrictions on each lot other than what these only ordinance requires.
Tiffany Brent, I'm a selectwoman in Parsonsfield, and I'd like to make a comment and then have a question. The F O N, Forest Street Operation Notification, filed with the state gets sent to the town. Jeff is correct. On that F O N, it did state subdivision. We wouldn't be here right now if at that time, which was October 2016, if Mr. Wadsworth told us, I'm planning a subdivision, what can I do, what can't I do, what should I do? He would have been given the information. Instead, he wrote a letter, actually, saying that he was in total compliance, what, with the DEP and the state? What about cutting into the buffer? That's not in compliance with our ordinances. So we have a credibility issue from the get-go here. I want to know, my question is, after making that statement about credibility, what is planned for the rest of this lot? Five years, 10 years down the road, what is planned for the rest of the 60-plus acres?
As far as I know from Mr. Wadsworth, it could be an estate lot. He may do some additional timber harvesting when the, when the time is right, or he may sell it and develop it. Whatever the ordinance allows, he'll certainly come back and deal with everyone who's seen fit to deal with the same as this project.
I'd just like to let Tiffany know, we as a board have discussed something along the lines of like a 10-year moratorium on that piece of property. It's actually in the, the conditions that the lawyer drew up, so it's something that we probably will be addressing. I would like to see something addressed with that too, but I don't think, we'll get, we'll get to it tonight, probably something we'll have to address at a meeting.
Thank you, Rick.
Are there any other comments or concerns or questions? Yes, Jeff, you have one?
Two things, if I can remember them. The marquis out front has the September 6th and 7th to town vote, but this is an appointment meeting, and I think as the planning board, if you know you're gonna have a meeting like this, you put it out in the shop, this guy, which you know, and maybe have the marquise change out front, so when people drive by, they know this important meeting. There's only 13 people here, besides the attorneys and yourselves, so it's a really sad turnout. A lot of people don't meet the shop's guy. A lot of people don't drive by the town hall. But sometimes word of mouth works, and, you know. And the other thing is, at the first meeting when they came in to do their 14 houses, there was another gentleman that presented it, and I turned to Tiffany, I said, this is, this is the property that was logged already. And the guy that was presenting, the engineer who was, he didn't know if it was logged or not. And then he changed his mind, said, oh, I guess it was logged. But he didn't, he was, he didn't know what to say at first, you know, it was logged, it was logged. It's just too many, too many things that have gone wrong, and for them to just be able to get what they want because they think they can, you know. I think it's up to the board to really stand up and say, you know what, you guys didn't do things right. We're gonna say no. You knew you wanted to put a subdivision, and you, they knew they wanted to put a subdivision in. It was right on the permit. I went through the planning board, and, and not this board, but the board before, they said, Jeff, they have no proof. He shows the proof. Went in the town hall, got a, looked at cut permits, there it was, cutting for a subdivision. Part of the planning board, here's your proof. Same thing with this late board, Jeff, where's your proof? Here's your proof. He's cutting for a subdivision. And he cut all the trees down, and he brings somebody in and says, oh, there's not much wildlife. Should have been in there four years ago. It was on the plan to have a wildlife biologist come in, but they should have done that before
Corey, may I ask what this would be intending, or what you're gonna be discussing?
The subdivision.
What in particular?
There's a few things.
Okay.
Do I have different standards than everyone else? I thought this was a public here.
Have to vote to allow you to speak.
Yeah, you're, you're Porter resident, so it has
The last three meetings, nobody asked me anything or voted to allow me to speak, so I'm just wondering why it's different tonight.
It's the law.
So is it a general standard during public hearings? Anyone that's not a resident of Parsonsfield should, should be voted upon with the lines of speak by board.
Okay, but not regular meetings, because at regular meetings, the past three, I have not been voted upon.
Yeah. You also really didn't wait, you kind of barged in the last meeting. Not barged in, but
There's a video. I always raise my hand, too.
Okay, all right. But, so listen, we're gonna, we're gonna vote, whether outside residents should be allowed to speak or not, and then we'll go from there. All right.
Okay, and I would just like to say that you may consider your public notice that says the community, not residents.
So as a board, are we allowing members of us in Parsonsfield to speak tonight? Others in favor, say yea. All right. All right, so can you please come up, state your residence and full name for the candidate?
I live in the town of Porter. I'm here with concerns for the leadup plantation, as I have been since, I think it was May of 2017, which is much longer than I think any of the board members have been here.
Are you continuing to act for Mr. Clifford?
What's that?
Are you continuing to act for Mr. Clifford?
No, no. As I had not done for over a year in front of the planning board. That, that's a different topic that you want for the public. But I'm here as myself, as I have been in the past, and I'll try to keep it brief because I appreciate the other residents speaking. There are many issues over these years that a lot of you haven't made it for. We've had the engineer sign a soil survey map. We've had a, a high-intensity soil survey that wasn't. And now, I, my, I guess my first question to the board is, have you received any communication from the Department of Transportation in the past week? Okay, so I ask that you open up the application to section, I believe it's 15, which is the Department of Transportation permits. which is the Department of Transportation permits. And there's an email communication in there between Mr. Fontaine and Mr. Greer. But over the years, I have continued to say that DOT will not ensure the town site distance. I'm sure many of you have heard me say it. It's sort of my broken record, one of them. Mr. Greer said it again on the sidewalk a few weeks ago. I know there was at least a couple of board members present when he said it. I can't remember who. I can remember the driveway that we were standing at. But because this continues to be a concern, that DOT, this is not DOT's job, and they will not do it, I contacted Mr. Fontaine, actually before that sidewalk. And I told him, "This narrative keeps being played to view as a planning board." So if you read the email, it says, and as you remember, Mr. Greer said at the sidewalk, "DOT will ensure the site distance of the town." We've been hearing this for two years. And the road agent has not issued driveway permits. The abutters have complained, residents have complained, that this is a dangerous stretch of road. There's too many driveways. It's not safe, and they can't see far enough. And it keeps being said by the applicant that DOT will do this, DOT will do this. Well, no, the road agent, or the zoning officer, or the planning board needs to ensure this. Now, at the workshop, the planning board said, "Oh, we'll get a survey." Well, you said you'd get a survey on December 19th, 2017. It hasn't been done. So are you going to get a survey now? And what are you going to get a survey on? The road agent hasn't issued a town permit. So if you ask for a town assurance, you have nothing to get done. But anyway, back to DOT.
To clarify that question, though. So it's my understanding, and what we've discussed during the board, is no permits can be issued to a parcel of land unless it's by an actual applicant who owns the land. It's by the land, is that, is that your guys' understanding? Like the subdivision, like the proposed driveways are proposals? Is that, yeah, okay.
Who has informed you of this?
Inform you of what?
That, what you just said. Where did you get those facts?
What, that they can't issue a driveway permit?
That your road agent won't issue driveway permits to the subdivision to ensure the health and safety of the town without the someone purchasing the property willing to buy it? Because they need to come in within this application, as they always have.
The proposals of the driveways are supposed to come in the application. That's what's in our ordinance, right? We don't require, we don't, we require the DOT to sign on.
Why aren't you not ensuring the town site distance? It's separate from V O T, it's more strict.
And we've had those, that's when the driveways have been joined, and we have now site distances.
From who?
And the last workshop has been discussed that we're in the process of hiring independent consultants who will verify those distance boards. Because we as a board do not feel qualified with the high level of ordinance that are on this right now to make sure that we are 100% sure of this. So we are hiring, this whole application is being reviewed. So all these things, and I know you're talking about things that you wanted to happen months ago.
I have something a little more.
But until we have the whole, which we do now, we're now in the process of getting third party to review everything. And none of this, no permit's going to be issued for anything, because nothing's been approved.
With all due respect.
Nothing's been approved.
You guys have put the cart so far before the horse that you're reviewing, after you've approved the preliminary plan. The applicant stated for two years that DOT will assure the town site distance. There's now a record that says this has gone before the legal department of DOT that says this has never been said and never been represented. Yet you're looking at it in the application.
If they don't have, if they don't have driveways.
I mean, I know what your intention is.
If they don't have driveways that meet the site distances, they won't get approved regardless.
How do you have someone review town permits that have never been issued for two years?
The permits, the location, proposed locations. Ultimately, no one will be able to build a lot if they don't have an athlete, they don't have a driveway that meets.
So are you telling the taxpayers that no one needs a permit, a driveway permit from the town before you issue a permit here?
What we're telling you is that we haven't reviewed it yet. And it's quite a big deal.
I mean, I know that subdivisions are complicated, but what's been said in December 19th, 2017, the planning board requires an independent survey of the town required site distance. It's now August of 2019, and you still haven't done it, and you're going to tell me you still don't need to do it.
We haven't done it because we didn't have a finalized application to review.
You required it back then.
Right, we discussed it back then, so we did not have finalized application or review. Now, if the question is, like, will these proposed lots, if approved, require permits? Yes, absolutely, they will. What's being proposed in the plan is proposals. None of this has been voted on by the board, approved or denied. So how are we going to, we're going to issue permits?
I've been here longer than you, JB. I know how this trend is.
Did you want to drop your hands down now, or?
No, I'm just saying, you've told the public you require things in the past, and it's two years later, and you haven't done it. And we're still sitting and fighting about the driveways that DOT is saying.
We're not fighting.
We've never said these things. You're listening to the applicant say at these sidewalks, "DOT will do this," and you're mugging it. And it's tiring that, and to keep in mind, there's someone missing from this room that should be here. But it's tiring that this stonewalling is continuing. And that it seems like, in my perception, with my experience, that this isn't, this isn't right. And that this town needs to put in a public information request to DOT. I can give you the address and the topic, and find out what they have discussed regarding the town of Parsonsfield. Because we need to know this before we go forward.
Productive for us to just point to go over our issue.
I'll take that as a no. Appreciate your advice. What's your follow-on question?
My following question is, what, where are you at with hiring independent consultants? Because this has been requested since June of 2017.
I can say, I put out a few requests for quotes, and we're waiting for them. I was expecting to see maybe one or two of them today. Apparently, they haven't gotten back to us, so it should be. Matter of fact, I will make a point tomorrow to call all four of the same companies that I've spoken with and follow up. So we will have some idea what, you know, at least what the quotes are going to be. I mean, that's where we're going.
Yeah, I know, it takes time. I don't understand why we're here today.
Well, no, I agree. In retrospect, I think maybe the public hearing tonight was a little premature. Maybe we should have waited, but it was scheduled, we're here now. You know, maybe we should have waited till we got some information back from the independent consultant, but we aren't where we are right now.
Will the board schedule another public hearing after the plan changes? We've already had changes in the driveway since the preliminary approval. And there are other issues involved that could change. Is there not a spaghetti lot still on the map, or did the?
There never has been.
The lot changed? Was it a typo?
The current plan does not have spaghetti.
Okay, but, all right, okay. I'll double-check if maybe there's a number wrong on that.
If you look at the frontage on Watson Road, it's a very square lot.
It's a very square lot?
And although, with your experience, the town has not issued driveway entrance permits under 160, the state of Maine does.
Both do. Because they have different guidelines. The town has a stricter regulation than the state.
Public Works Director told me he does not do driveway entrance.
Who's the Public Works Director?
What's his name? The road commissioner.
Maya Larry?
Yes, told me he does not do driveway entrance on 160. He leaves that up to the state to issue those permits.
I believe that's his responsibility, as is in other towns. But DOT will not ensure 450 feet. Will you agree with that?
DOT has looked at those, and I have an email from Tony that says they are excessive. They're in the 450, more excessive than that.
Tony, I believe, will dispute that, because I've talked to him. But it is the, it is the town's job to assure the site distance of this road.
Yes, and that's why we're hiring independent consultant, who is.
But Mr. Larry has failed to issue these permits, which has kept us going in this circle and circle and circle.
We can't issue permits until we know that those actually need site distance, which is what we're talking about, which is contacting an independent consultant to verify these distances. Is there any other questions that you want?
No, I just hope that you've taken into consideration all of the issues, the, you know, I'll say, my personal rights have been violated with this board, where I've been, you know, he tried to push me out, I'll have to say that. And you know this, and it has never been attempted to be resolved. There's plenty of public information that shows what is going on here. And it's, I hope that this project doesn't keep getting pushed down the track without considering the serious issues that could arise from the, what's going on in the background. And I know it's not easy to understand subdivision proposal, especially when there's things coming in from every angle, and you're not sure. But I appreciate the independent reviews. I hope the whole project is reviewed, start to finish, everything, and not in separate pieces. And they take it seriously, because this has been a very big waste of tax paid dollars, and it's been a very big waste of everyone in this time.
Question for our board. I think it's been brought up that since we're in the process of hiring all the independent review people, that we consider another public meeting with findings from an independent review board as opposed to a group of people that are working for a project. We need an independent review.
I think that's something we would have to consider at the next meeting, but, you know, since it's been brought up by the board, it's a good, it's a good thing.
Thank you. My name is Linda Griffin. I'm a real estate broker. I don't live in Parsonsfield, but I own property in Parsonsfield, and we pay taxes here. I have not been here from the beginning. I don't know all of the issues, but it seems that subdivisions are allowed in this zoning. And if these people don't want subdivisions, they need to change their zoning laws.
I see a little more complicated than that. There's been a few things that have gone on here that have complicated. But we know subdivisions are allowed, and that's why we're attempting to work it. But it goes a little deeper than that, so.
Thank you.
One more comment. I wear a number of hats. I am chairman of the town's comprehensive plan update. And this zoned area is zoned rural, and under our current rural zone area. It says this land use is intended for working farms and forests, as well as limited residential development. I don't have to go any further. I don't believe that eight homes is limiting residential development. That's all I have to say. It's a rural zone area. Not rural residential, it's rural.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Tiffany Brent again, this is one person in Parsonsfield. I have a question for the wildlife gentleman. I live within that 1.4 miles. I live on West Con. And we have long-bearded bats. Don't you consider that wildlife?
So, yeah, long-eared bats are, um, they are wildlife, for sure. But they, you can still develop within a certain time zone from, it's like in the summer. I can't remember the exact months. If you develop during that specific timeframe, then it doesn't harm them at all, or it limits.
They are endangered.
Let me figure out, I've been a lot of bats. Northern long-eared bats are endangered. Their population has been reduced down to about 2% due to white-nose syndrome. There are four caves, three in Western Maine and one in Northern Maine, where they hibernate over the winter. They've tried to disinfect the caves to see if that would help, and that doesn't help. It's very likely that they're going to go extinct. What Fish and, US Fish and Wildlife has done is implemented a program where they try to save maturity trees, where the bats raise their pups. And you cannot cut trees, if you don't know, if you don't know that there are no bats there, then you can't cut trees under the Fish and Wildlife's guidelines from the beginning of June to the middle of July. And if you avoid that period where they're raising their pups, then you seem to have avoided impacting the long-eared bats.
Okay. What about river? Are they actually living in the pond and not the river? Are they wildlife?
They're wildlife, but they're not mapped on the, on the state's significant wildlife habitat. So they don't show up on this map. But there, there is.
They do exist, and they are in our pond, as opposed to on the sago. And that is within that 1.4 mile radius that you have.
Yep, I mean, there is going to be wildlife within that radius, for sure. There's no doubt about it, but it's just not going to be significant wildlife habitat. That's been mapped by I F W.
I don't know, at least it looks significant to me.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Sir?
I have property that we own in Parsonsfield, on Elm Street. That's my, my weapon, I just talked, I just talked a minute ago. I was no planning board in Wyndham for 10 years, and I understand, really, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I really do. This is a second, third application on this process? Is that about a year? It's not the first one. It doesn't change. It changed from a 14 to an eight, and it changed something else.
It's a third, like revision?
It's the third. And so revision or no? Because you can't revise. It's a new, it's a new application.
I don't know, there were some revisions made. We were all new on this board. Things weren't going, you know.
No, this is a new application.
Correct, so then this application is being voted on its entirety of itself. So it is a new application, they withdrew their application, then they submitted this application for us to review, and it's gone through the review process, essentially.
So I understand that back in, you know, 2013, or 17, or 16, all these numbers, you throw them out. But this application was made when?
When did we vote, vote it in, completely, I think, April?
April this year?
It was submitted June 28th, 2016.
Okay. But that's the final, final plan? I think we filed.
That's the preliminary or the final?
That's the final.
This one here is the final, but the preliminary was voted on, that you were going to go forward as of 2018? So everything before the.
Actually, it was right up to Christmas, wasn't it? Was it January or February? February? Yeah, February. So that was when they're, they're.
So we're 2018?
2019.
2019?
Yes.
So everything that happened and was said in 2017 doesn't mean anything, because this is a new application. So I don't know why the public people are coming back and throwing out whether, you know, I was no planning board, and I understand where you're coming from, but a new application, new application. Everything back in 2017, or 16, or 15, or whatever you want to do, has nothing to do with this application. I know you're going to preliminary, you did a preliminary, you voted on it, could you move forward? Everything's being reviewed by third party. I understand that. We did that, we did that at Wyndham. We actually hired an engineer to come in and beat on and not have to do third-party review and work for the best, where they're supposed to work with the best, best agency. Anyway, whether you pay a third party, or you have somebody on staff. We had somebody on staff, so we had to pay third party. Everything's reviewed by third party. You guys have all the information. I know this is difficult, that people don't want the subdivision there. I understand, in that subdivision, you're allowed to have it in the subdivision, whether it's farm, or rural, or rural residential, you're allowed to have this here. If it wasn't, you wouldn't be here doing this. You'd be on the Z B A, so we're going to repeal this, because it doesn't meet this application. It does, it does now. That's why he's here. He's not in the Z B A. I just, this has gone on a long time, and I'm glad I'm not doing subdivision in Parsonsfield right now, especially something small. I mean, you know, we have 50, 60, 100-acre parks up in Wyndham that we had to approve. And I understand that everybody's sensitive to this area, but the information you have is in front of you.
So, so this has gone on for a long time, because they wouldn't conform to our ordinances. What happened is, the planning board didn't let us get just rolled over. The planning board actually stood up and said, "No, you're going to conform to our ordinances." So there was a tremendous amount of fraud and a tremendous amount of deceit. The planning board, we've really been beat up over this. So I understand where you're coming from. Your own property, you want to make sure you can develop it, as long as you follow the ordinances in the town. That's all, that's all we've done, is we've applied the ordinances to this application.
Is he applying? Is he, is he applying? Is he, is he spying?
Right, right now.
As of, as of this year?
Yeah. So, so what, what, what folks, what folks were talking about earlier was they were bringing up some of the deceit and some of the problems in the past. I, I agree, those applications are done. We're not judging those applications. Nobody from the board has even addressed those applications. You might have heard the public speak about it because there was deceit and fraud and they keep bringing it up because they don't want us to forget. So all we're doing now is we're thoroughly vetting this application. This will be the most thoroughly vetted subdivision in Parsons Field. It will be. There's no doubt about it. That's what we're doing here. I appreciate the fact that you want, you want to see this done properly. That's all we've been trying to do. So now that they've started to conform, maybe we can move forward on this. That's where we are.
But to bring up the subdivisions that happened before this.
We can bring it up. We can bring it up.
And so why are you listening to this?
We're, we're listening to this. There's people from our town who are concerned about this and there's been fraud here. We're listening to this, what you're saying.
Get this fraud and take, take the fork and sue it.
No, it was not. The application first is what we do.
I will say, I will say, listen, as frustrating as this process has, has been for the board, the applicant, the, the public, the one thing that I, I as board chair have tried to maintain throughout this process is equal access for the public to be able to speak their opinion and the board to be able to consider it, not against the ordinance, but just because we are also members of this public and that's what makes good community. At, at, at every meeting that we've had, and perhaps this is a fault of mine as board chair, but I have allowed time for questions, comments, concerns. Now, as the right of the applicant and the public, a public hearing is the opportunity for the public to express their opinions and comments on this application. I understand.
This application.
And because they're, they're speaking about things that aren't particularly relevant uh to this application, but the prior, previous applications does not mean that us as a board have to uh judge that information based off of it. I can't tell people what to say, sir. I can't.
I understand that, but like I said, 10 years, you can't bring, we've had one scroll, two, three, four times come through a different application with, with, you know, went from, you know, 50 down to 30 or down to 10 or whatever it was. And that, that's, that's, you can't look at that.
No, and we don't.
And to bring it up in a board meeting, that the, in February this year is when it was, when it was approved preliminary, that's what you look at. You don't go back to 2013 and say, oh yeah, by the way.
You're absolutely correct, sir.
I'm sorry, that's.
I, I would encourage you and every other member of the public, uh, we have a YouTube channel where we've videotaped our, our meetings, particularly on this subject and every other subject that comes before Parsons Field. Um, and you guys, you guys can see the meetings and see that a lot of times we are listening to the same things over and over and over and over again, which is okay, because that is what the public is concerned about. Now, does that mean it has relevance on our, the decision in accordance with ordinance? Not, not particularly, but I mean, there, there is some room within any public board for public opinion to matter. And I want to make sure that the public will always know that their opinion matters. Now, is it always relevant? No, it's not. But they have the right to speak, just like you have the right to speak, just like I have the right to speak. So I, I appreciate it, sir, and I, I, I will say that we as a board, we are going forward with, with that. We, we are taking the application as it stands, as, as I said before, in its entirety today.
As of February this year.
As of February this, when the preliminary plan was, was voted as complete and then the final plan was voted as, or the final plan was presented to us in June, and that will be our next action, based solely on the final plan and its applicability to the ordinances and that it meets everything, that's what, what the decision will be based on by each board in the ordinance.
I, I understand. I mean, the lady brought this up about 160, 160 is a state road. You guys can't, I mean, there's a proposed driveways, but the town is no, they have no, as long as they meet the criteria for the state, that's it. I mean, that's, they ask you, the demands.
They give the town what you want, more strict authority. Yes, we can apply our site distance to, to, to that 160.
Even if we don't issue the permit, we issue a permit, the structure to be there, they have to have.
There's a lot of different areas under the state road you have to, you don't, let's say you have a right, you don't, you don't get permits by, from the town, you don't get a permit from the town, the town, the town road commission, you get it from state.
Could you clarify what is, could you kind of sum it up in one point, what you want to tell us?
Well, I just think this has been going on, which you want.
I know a lot of people. People on both sides think that's something.
Vote on the application. Vote on the landmark. It's, it's more than two years, it's a ridiculous.
Still more reviewing on our end.
But it is, it is really going back a few years though, based on what you just said.
Right, because February.
Application right at this point. All right. Todd, you're next. After you treat you guys coming up to the front, just make sure we get, get everybody on camera.
I don't like him, yeah.
How are we seeing your mug up there?
First of all, when you take a, a vote on a non-resident, does that cover the rest of the meeting?
Uh, we're going to ask people to continue to state their name and their, their township, yes.
Okay. So the last two speakers, although they are taxpayers in town, they are not residents.
Correct.
Okay. So you should have called a vote first.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll get that.
I, I thought we voted for the meeting. Is that not right? We would allow non-residents to speak.
No, I believe you just voted for her, but.
Uh, we, we can look at the camera later, but specifically what I said was.
I'm not against them speaking your mind.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you're going to do it for one, then you either do it for everybody at the beginning or.
Right. And that's, that's what I, I would address the.
Now, he brought up a point about, uh, about things being brought up that don't necessarily pertain uh to this latest proposal. First of all, the one about the clear cutting does pertain to this one. Because uh even though they knew that there was a subdivision and Wattsworth's representative actually lied to us on the first uh lot, because I was on the planning board at the time. And they lied us, to us about several things, about perk tests, about uh how they had uh shaped the, the configurations of the lots. They lied to us about that house that was built there. And they lied about the fact that it was going to be a subdivision in the first place. And the subterfuge carried on for every one of these applications. I believe the first one, we put on the table, I thought it was dead for two years, but evidently somebody made a point of order for a waiver for six months. So they were able to reapply in six months. But these same, same issues came up. Uh, and I'll be, I'll be kind, I believe that Wattsworth, I E his representatives, were disingenuous at best. They weren't honest with us. And it started out with 14, 15 lots and now it's down to what, eight? Eight lots? They still haven't, no, I guess they have guaranteed that they're going to put something in as far as buffers go at each lot. Because at this juncture, there's probably a lot of weeds growing there and, well, weeds aren't what I consider to be, you know, what was there before. It used to be trees there, now there isn't any trees, so there's no seedlings, so now what's growing there is weeds. The other problem I guess they have is with the driveways. And at the last meeting I went to, uh, we had discussed maybe sharing driveways. But I think it's disingenuous of somebody to set up lots and tell the prospective owner, here is where your driveway is. And then at some juncture, they try to get a permit for a driveway and they find out that they were out of luck. Now, I have a lot of bickering between the rules as far as the D O T goes and the town. The town can be more restrictive. So in essence, these driveway lots are important. And essentially, they should look to see where they can get away with sharing driveway lots. I know people don't like them. Probably hard to sell property, but that's a dangerous stretch of road and unless you can get the state to lower the speed limit there, that still doesn't guarantee safety. Uh, I think there should be work done. Now, I came up with a question and I asked you what kind of covenants is you put on these properties. I, I don't know if you have building envelopes. Do you have building envelopes?
Yeah.
Okay. So they have to build within a certain confines of this building envelope.
Correct.
They do have an association, so perhaps the covenants is not that important. But there still seems to be this driveway problem and it also seems to be the buffers. And I don't think the buffers should be done at the time of the sale of the property. Should have been done in the spring. Now it can't be done until the fall. You plant a bush there now and it's not going to grow. So I think you got at least two. And since I've been away for so long, I kind of lost my train of thought there, but.
So if I can answer, uh, we have worked on the driveways. They are shared between one and two, three and four, five by the zone.
Okay.
What was proposed was one driveway on 160 that would go to six, uh, six, seven, and eight. However, during the sidewalk, uh, walking that stretch, even though we are, we were told and we are confirming through a third party that this lot, this driveway would need 450 site distance.
Right.
That's why we have proposed what's in red down there, which is now one driveway coming off of Hussey, which is a slower, uh, or not as slower, it's still 45.
You're talking right at the end.
But it's, it's uh still safer, I would say, than coming out of 160. So that was proposed since the last sidewalk and discussed in the last workshop. So we are very concerned about the driveways, the speed, the, um, the sharing of driveways and making sure to eliminate. I mean, we've gone from 14 lots having one driveway originally down to eight lots that have one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
So we understand and we are.
All right. Well, see, I, I only caught up to speed because I haven't been.
And then, and then again, to, to go over the, um, the landscaping, agreed, the, the buffer had been cut into and we addressed that by on this plan, uh, having a landscaper go in, going through the areas that are sparse and coming up with a landscape plan, which Watson will, will be responsible for planting before this, to restore that buffer.
And that will be reviewed as part of.
Exactly. So yes, we, those are concerns, those have been concerns since the start. We are, as a board, doing our best to address those in how we can in this application.
Okay. And I would just like to make, I've been on unpopular planning boards, uh, where even neighbors of mine hated. But in the inevitable end, if these subdivisions pass the test of the ordinances, it's the obligation of the board to pass. So as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I know that you seem very frustrated about, about past history, but past history is in fact present history here. And, um, I think it's a little disingenuous to come up here and criticize them or me because I was on the very, uh, the, the first time that they proposed this. And just say that they're trying to stonewall. They are not stonewalling. It's their responsibility to make sure that they turn over every rock. And in this case, like I said, this case has been very disingenuous. And I don't blame the skepticism on the board and people, although I noticed that not as many people showed up tonight as they had been. I think they're getting a little tired. But Wattsworth, they come here and, and play this car drive, he would have gotten this long ago. Only because our ordinances are lower. But instead, he, he came in, tried to push us, and then he found out that that wasn't the way to go. So now here we are, four years later, and the only one I can blame is Wattsworth.
Thank you, sir. Tiffany.
I'm having a hard time getting up, so camera's not going to get me, but I know I didn't have to speak into that, it could be heard. Um, I'm a little bit, I've met you two before, last meeting, and I agree with what you're saying to a certain point, but the reason why people keep bringing up past history is because of the history that we've had with them. They were not entirely honest. And so everybody here is concerned that going forward, are we going to get honest results? Are we going to be hearing, this is it, you're not going to develop that back 35? Um, there's a whole bunch of, I, I thank you, Rick, for letting me know that there's going to be possibly a 10-year moratorium on that. Everybody here is concerned about Lebat plantation, the fact that they cut into the buffer, they acted first and asked, asked for forgiveness later. You're supposed to ask permission first, so you don't have to ask forgiveness later. The whole reason why the people who are here are here is because of the past history. It doesn't matter that this is the third iteration or the 10th iteration, the first, second, and third iterations, there were problems with it. And that's why people are making comments about it. It's not, if they did it right the first time, we wouldn't be here tonight. They would already had their subdivision. So that's why everybody's upset and talking about it and talking about the past history because as Todd just said, it is present history. It is a problem. When you have a problem with somebody's honesty, you are going to turn over every rock and make sure that things are being done properly this time. And that's what this planning board is doing. These guys up here are really being very detail oriented, they're being very specific. They are looking under every rock. They're making sure that every dot and tittle is done. Everything is being checked and that they are following the ordinances to the T and the conditions that they will be putting on the subdivision. Subdivision probably will be approved some form or another, but it's going to have to be based on our ordinances and the conditions that this board puts on the subdivision. But that's the reason why we keep going back to 2016, because that was when they knew they were going to have a subdivision. And instead of asking permission, they cut and then they ask forgiveness. That's why. I'm done.
Thank you. Um, I will say that, uh, when I first took over board chair, uh, I was, I used to be in the federal government, uh, as a civil servant there. And I talked with one of my mentors before deciding to become chair. His advice to me at the time was that if you're, if everyone's unhappy with you, you're probably doing a fair job. So I will say, I think we're doing a hell of a job, guys. Um, we're going to take a few more questions and.
Yeah, I suggest we, you know, kind of now stick to, um, the application at hand.
Right.
If there's any questions, comments, or concerns about this.
Absolutely. Sounds fair. All right. So, uh, please, any questions or about the current application? All right. Cory.
Do you want to come up by the big mouth?
If you can speak loud enough.
Um, so about the upcoming peer reviews that are incredibly important on this project as we know, I want to make sure that the taxpayers do not expend any more dollars towards that. I watched your budget meeting on the video and it showed that not only had the taxpayers paid up to a certain point last year when David Bauer sent me an invoice, I haven't received an up-to-date one, but I'm willing, I'm wondering if you can tell the people of Parsons Field how much was paid for the lawyer and how much they'll pay for the future peer review?
So I, I, I don't have the lawyer amounts in front of me, um, because I was out chasing.
Would it rough estimate to be like nine grand?
Hold on, hold on. So I will say that, um, the consultant fees as scheduled in our ordinances will be paid for by the applicant out of the deposit that they put forth.
The future?
For any consultants. Now, we as a board hired David Lorry not as a consultant, but as a town attorney to review the project.
Would you imagine that was a mistake to not research farther so the taxpayers didn't have to compensate for that? Because it should have been, if he's a consultant, it would be. If he's a consultant, the applicant should have paid for that, not...
I will note your opinion, but we, as a planning board, have access to a legal budget for the town. And that legal budget is set aside and voted by the taxpayers to pay for our legal fees. We, as a board, exercised our town attorney on questions that we didn't feel we had legal knees enough to vet, and that's why we hired him on. Now, I went before the select board before hiring Mr. Lory. We discussed broadly how it would be paid for, and then it was decided by the select board how the ultimate funds were paid for Mr. Lory. Now, it was my hope and intention that we could charge the applicant for that.
Under 62B.
But because it isn't a consultant, it's a legal attorney...
Excuse me?
He's an attorney, not a consultant.
Right. Because he's not a consultant, he's an attorney.
But as Ms. Bren explained, you could have avoided the taxpayers compensating the lawyer for all of these troubles by hiring another attorney.
We...
I'm just trying to avoid this in the future.
So for the future, all planning board consultants will be paid by the applicant. And if there are legal attorney, like town attorney expenses, they will be debited as directed by the select board. Now, that is generally the town legal fund. And you can follow up with the select board on how they decide that. I'm just talking about this specific application.
Okay. Okay. I guess my final comment to that would be, if you needed to spend thousands of dollars of taxpayer money, maybe you just deny the project instead of dipping into their pockets.
Can I speak to that for a minute?
The reason that we utilized the town lawyer was because in the background, and this is a possibility, if we were to deny this application, the applicant could then go before the zoning board, appeals, and then... One minute, please.
No, I know.
And then further to the courts in the state of Maine, which would be more expensive for us than doing due diligence and having our lawyer sort of check our little procedure as we go. So to present this in terms of it being an unnecessary expense, the taxpayer is somewhat, as the word has been bandied around, disingenuous. Not to say somewhat misleading. Thank you.
Okay. If I may, real quick. So I have attended all the meetings since, you know, June of 2017. I heard your town attorney say you can deny this project based on site distance alone. We still stand here arguing about whether the road agent has to issue driveway permits on 160 or not along with DOT, which I think you should get some MMA advice on, maybe. So about an estimate, I'm $8,000 spent by the taxpayers. Town attorney says, based on the lack of verification of the site distance alone,
Misleading that...
You deny this project.
That is misleading. That was not his sole advice to the board.
Was not his sole...
That was one of his comments among many, and recommendations and conditions.
It's recorded as an audible, but I bet my phone picked it up.
Okay, and that's fine, but that is...
But I'm just saying...
Because that was one of many comments that...
If you use the attorney, you should take his advice. And we wouldn't still be here today. I'm sorry, I can't hear you over JP.
It wasn't advice. He was making a statement. He did not advise us...
Why would you pay him if you weren't looking for his advice?
All right, so did you have anything else misaligned?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. So we're going to ramp up the question portion as a board, just to discuss a little bit of business. So were either of you guys able to get a hold of consultants?
We're still waiting. I've put out four calls to various organizations from Portland to Brewer. I don't think that we would have a chance to have anything reviewed, even if we hear a currum tomorrow before the meeting next week. So I really don't think we would have a chance to vote on the application of the next week.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Some of the parties, but our work will just kind of be a month out.
Right. Sorry. And I would expect to hear back from them this week, and then maybe we could actually pick one at the next meeting. So we should have maybe four bids to choose from. We can discuss it and choose one at the next meeting.
If you get responses, could you email us in the yard so we can check them out?
I'm sure Lindsay could do that here.
And as far as the applicant, or truly representative, so that's, as a board, during the next meeting, if you guys may have somebody there, we will be discussing the consultants and then discussing when the next meeting that we could have would be.
I have brought you another application with drawings that you can give to the consultant.
Yeah, I heard that.
If you wish for that. I have a suggestion. It's just a suggestion. We started this with R.J. Felman from the Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission. You may want to talk to him and have him do a piece of the review, and then hire consultants through him. He may have better connections or more experience with certain consultants. So you may not end up hiring a particular consultant. You may end up hiring a couple.
So I will say, just like any other member of the public, we appreciate your recommendation and opinion. We, as a board, during our last meeting, discussed contacting a few different consultants and then discussing the issue once we have answers back from everybody. And that's...
That's fine. That's fine. It's just a... It's easier for...
I just took a look before we came up here at the agenda for next week, and Watson Wood is listed on there as an addition to discussion of consultants. It listed review of public hearing and discussion of sidewalk. Just need to know, are those items going to be discussed next week as well, or just consultants?
I think just the consultants. I think we ramped up the sidewalk issues on the workshop. Unless... I mean, I'm open to the board for this one. Like, does anybody have anything that I've done that you consultants can discuss through that?
I don't think there's much more we can, you know, until we have the...
The feedback.
There's not... I mean, obviously, we have, you know, what was said tonight, but, you know, we're not going to be voting on anything, you know, whether they're going. We need to really get your review before we can do anything.
We just need to know who we should be here, and if it's just limited to discussing and voting on a consultant, that's different.
I think we should leave it at that. I think there's some other issues that may need to be discussed.
Such as?
Preparing to...
Mr. Crowe brought it up tonight, and I brought it up at the prior meeting, the issue of density.
Yeah, no, I know you want to discuss that. I mean, do you want to... Would you prefer to have someone present if we discuss that? I know we talked about that on the sidewalk. We didn't mention it at the workshop, because I conceded to you that we looked...
If you're going to have substantive discussion on anything, we want to be here.
So do we want to have that discussion?
We want to have it.
I think we'd better have it. It's kind of a slow shot.
Right, so you want to have that discussion Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be consultants and density. That's what we discuss at the meeting.
All right. Any other business to order?
Yes, you know, one thing. My name's Brendan Adeline. I'm a full-time planning board member. Like many of us, I was appointed to my position because, you know, there's always open positions on the planning board, even after an election. And I only mention that because, quite frankly, I couldn't even tell you when my term expires now, because I was appointed for one position, and now I've filled another position.
You know what I mean?
But at some point, I may decide, or I may not decide, to run again. So I'll just put this out there. That way, you know, people can make their own formal decisions. But, you know, I recognize that timelines aren't going to keep anybody happy. And quite frankly, I've heard the timeline being used by both different sides as, you know, being reasonable or unreasonable. But what I can assure you is my own opinion, and I'll just put this out there in case I ever run again, is I really don't think it's a waste of taxpayers' money to ensure that due process is followed. And sometimes, that can take a long time. And I mean due process for everybody. That means the people in the community, that means the applicant. And that's all I'm going to say on that. I mean, I totally stand behind the decisions we've made so far. I'll do it again. But that is not a waste of money. Due process, this is all about due process, and that's why they say it may be a long time. Because everybody, including the people that have concerns, need a due process, as well as the applicant. That is the balance we make on the planning board. And I can tell you that in the past, I would say this planning board probably went for too long without getting enough legal advice. So as far as legal fees go, I don't even know what they are. That number isn't accurate. I think that might be like total legal fees for the town. But we utilize the resources so that we can make sure... These are not consulting questions we have. It's making sure that we are in line with our ordinance and state statutes while we make our decisions and go about our process. You know, and just to be clear, Mr. Lory is the attorney who represents the corporation of Parsons Field. So anybody who's an officer or works for that corporation can interface with him. He is not a consultant. I just want to make that... And I know we beat this up, I want to make that really clear. He is not a consultant. When we bring him in, he is our lawyer. And we cannot bill an applicant for... And this is from his own mouth, okay? He cannot be considered a consultant, because he represents the company. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate that, Brendan. I really do.
And my vote is over.
On that note, September elections are coming up. Let's see, my position will be vacant, and we have one other position that will be vacant, two open planning board positions. I truly value the work that I've been able to do through this community, through the planning board. It has been frustratingly joyous. I can't get to say that. But I'm trying to start my own business and my own farm, and I need to devote as much attention to that over the next year or two as I have to the planning board more. So I will encourage any residents that we have here that might be watching this tonight or tomorrow night, please think about volunteering in your community as a planning board member. I think that it is a fulfilling way to have a touch of influence on what the future is, not only for you, your friends, your families, but your children as well.
These people are all present tonight.
I know.
Sell them a hard thing.
Yeah. So if you're considering it, if you have the capacity, we will have two positions that will be open. And if you are interested or have any questions, grab any of us to sit down and talk with us one-on-one. We can give you our flat-out base opinion, and hopefully, it'll be something you guys decide to do.
Just want to make a comment about running for planning board. Even though you're not on the ballot, the last person that got on the planning board got on the planning board with four votes total. Okay, so if you're even considering it, write your name in. Ask your friends and family to write your name in. You'll probably get on the board.
Well, once you get one person besides yourself by your name, although last time, five people wrote themselves on the board.
Talk to me, I'll be voting for you.
Still a little position after the elections.
All right, so this wraps up tonight's public hearing. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Some of the board members will probably be sticking around. If you guys want to bend their ear on the way out. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, 7 o'clock, August 21st?
23rd.
And on next Tuesday.
20th.
Cool, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Night, thank you.